All right, I will call us to order at 7:03 by my clock. So Heinsberg School Board, April 9th, 2014. Item 2.0, adjustments to the agenda, I have two. I would like to pull the March 3rd annual meeting minutes out of the consent agenda and make that 7.2. And we need to add a new 7.3. As an action item, we have to act on the job share request that we've been given. And I can give you more update on that when we get there. 3.0, audience and communications. I think the only people besides us are the presenters, so it sounds like we don't have any for that. And it looks like we're at 4.1, the 5 to 8 academic program presentation. Jeff, Mr. O'Hara, do you want to introduce our 5-8 teachers?
Absolutely. So we're going to be presenting the middle level presentation for 5-8 today. We have Tom Darling, who's going to be doing the literacy side of the presentation, Barb Spalding for social science, and Maria Verrier for math. Jen Bradford just texted, she is en route, she is at HCS looking for which room we're in. So she will be here, and luckily I caught these guys today, and I think everybody was going to go to HCS. I wanted to give a little overview on what exactly it is that we're going to be talking about today. When I first got to Heinsberg, there was a little bit of a reconfiguration going on with what is middle school and things like that. Now that Allegra is here, we were able to split up, and now what I consider the middle level now is the 5-8 program. So I wanted to make sure that people weren't thinking about 6-8 during this presentation, that's really 5-8. One thing that I, that's different this year, that we've kind of been moving slowly in the direction of, is departmentalization. Right now, Steve Heaney is the 5th grade literacy teacher, Angela Galian is the 6th grade literacy teacher, and then Tom does the 7-8s for literacy. For math, we have Kerry Wallace as the 5th grade, Paul Lasher for the 6th grade, and then Maria does the 7-8s. And then for science, Paul Rochelow for 5th grade, up to Angela Galian in 6th grade, and then Steph Konowitz, who I'm going to be presenting on the behalf of science today. And then social science, same thing, Paul Rochelow to Paul Lasher to Barb Spalding. And what this has allowed us to do is really have focused, efficient meetings. Here's where we are, here's where we want to go, how can we get there in the most efficient and effective way? So I really like the change, and I think that our growth has shown that it's made a difference. The current configuration right now is that there's three 5th grade teachers, two 6th grade teachers, and four 7-8 teachers. The presentation today is mainly going to be programmatic and academic. I don't want to lose sight of the social-emotional that the group has worked really hard on promoting. They have a rec time that the teachers, the teachers up in the 6-8 are, they supervise the lunchroom, because that's the time to socialize with the kids. And they also provide activities for the students during the 20-minute chunk of time opposite their lunchtime, to really connect with the kids in a different way. They have something called win time, it's what you need time, it's when kids can go back and check in with them. Friday challenge is something that Barb and Tom have started. It's an opportunity to build team in a much more in-depth way. And then lunch bunches, I was down in the 5th grade today, and I thought it was a class, but it was actually, I think most of the 5th grade eats lunches in their classrooms. So who are we? When I started to think about, I wanted to put some pictures to who it is that we're talking about, so I was like, what is a typical 5th through 8th grade student? And then I thought to myself, well, that range is so ridiculously broad. So then I started to come up with pictures. So these guys are 5th graders in the front row, and then the guys in the back are 8th graders. And I just kind of wanted, I think about developmental size. Again, 5th grade girls in the front, 8th grade girls in the back. And then I started thinking about characteristics of middle school students, middle-level students. They can be the most kind, generous, loving people, that always get along, they can be mentors to little people, and then they can also be at each other at a snap of your fingers. So when I was thinking, what is a middle-level student, it's pretty much everything. So this one, I was going to give you a quiz to see if you could tell what they were trying to portray, but they can either be really focused in thinking critically, or these girls think that they're daydreaming. I guess this is universal daydreaming. And then there's the big happy family of my little photo piece. So I want to give credit where credit is due. Tom put this together, because this is a piece that is important to the bigger conversation. We know that research shows that it's harder to meet the needs of the students that are in the low SES and free and reduced lunch population, and then the students on IEPs, it's also additional resources and additional time. So this was a great few slides that Tom put together. One in five of our 7th and 8th grade students are low SES, free and reduced lunch, one in four in 6th grade, and one in three in 5th grade. We have one out of 10 students have IEPs in 7th and 8th grade, and one in five in 6th grade. So as they go through their academic programs, I want you to think about all those things. I want you to think about the developmental breadth of who they are, I want you to think about the challenges that come up every day, and then I'm pretty amazed with what the teachers are able to do every day. And Jen Bradford is now here. So Tom.
All right, so this week, we have been really focused on when Steve Heaney moved down to the 5th grade. Steve, Angela and I had a series of meetings with Jeff, and we really sort of mapped out what does the continuum look like from 5th grade to 8th grade? Because one of the things that hopefully you got from the slides earlier was this idea that we can't control the kids who come to our school, our community is certainly one with a lot of diverse needs. And the beauty of the public school is that we are the great equalizer. We are the people who make social mobility possible, that gives people options. And so we can't control what comes in in kindergarten or pre-K, but we have them for eight, nine years, six hours a day, 180 days a year, we should be moving the needle. And so that's sort of our emphasis. It's easy to look at 3rd grade scores and go, huh, but how do they end up when they leave HCS and they go off to CBU with all the other kids in our district? So we sat down, we made this continuum, because these are the four years that, you know, I'm part of. Next slide. And so these arrows just start to look, the idea of how is this a continuum? So if you look at like inquiry, just the idea of, and there'll be more talk about inquiry and what that means, of just asking those questions and research, and going down to the research projects they do in 6th grade, finally up to science fair. The idea of quoting sources, moving up to citing sources and such. Really what it's about is in 5th grade, we sort of shore up with a paragraph and then the multi-paragraph, and those skills. In 6th grade, Angela does a great job moving into essays, and really like, what are the elements that happens? And in 7th and 8th grade, we are shifting towards what you get in the high school, which is, okay, you can write, we know you can write a five-paragraph essay, or at least that's the expectation, why do we do it? We do it because we're studying social studies, we're studying science, you've got to communicate through writing, and it's now this really content thing, and this is just the vehicle we do. And so that's our goal by the end of 8th grade, is making it so, just like in the high school, they're not going to say, let me teach you how to write an essay. They're going to say, you have an essay due, and then it's about the content, next. All right, so we got our kneecap scores, 82%, it was the best year we've done yet. 82% of our students were proficient or above in writing. I consider writing to be the hardest of the three to do. Not to set you up, Maria, but that's. Go back. But I want to note, like, CSSU-wide for 8th grade, 75%, all right? So our kids are doing really well, and they're going off to CBU really prepared. Okay, and CBU, I don't know what happens up here, but 66%, so there you go. All right, next. So this is an example of 5th grade writing here, and this is a good student. I know it's hard to read, but once there was a girl named Sandra, and Sandra had a really hard life, she lived in a broken-down house, and she did no, I can't even read that.
She not have.
She have, have to move. So you get this idea here where you got a basic introduction, which is pretty good, you've got some details like name and such like that, second paragraph, and it keeps going like that. This is what you would expect from a solid 5th grade student, next. This is the other end of spectrum in 5th grade, when we look at it. Now here's a student, there was a boy, he lived to, he lied to his parents about math homework, and goes on like that, I could spend the whole day deciphering it. But what you get here is, you get a student who's coming to 5th grade, who's not in a horrible position, he's attempting to write a paragraph, the spelling's horrible, the grammar's horrible, everything, you know, penmanship, everything's horrible, but, you know, he's trying. But this is what we look at with our lower level in 5th grade, right, next. So now we look at an 8th grader who's comparable to the one that we saw first, the one who's like a really good student, exactly where he takes, oh, you've got nice handwriting, but also, you know, "Anater pet sparrow eagle embark on a challenging and dangerous journey climbing up a cliff." The author, T.A., barren uses many methods to show how challenging this climb is, and goes in the evidence detail. We keep going on to three pages if I put it up here, but you get a sense like, this is the growth that's happened from that 5th grade example to this 8th grade example, next. So here's an example, because it's all nice to look at on-demand prompts and things like that, but here's an example of a paper, this is the kind of thing they're going to experience in CBU. So this is a supporting paragraph for a paper, okay? And it gives you in life, you'll have failures and freedom may seem unregional, but you must be resilient, so when fate betrays you, you can pick yourself up and continue to try in life. And then gives an example from a poem, gives an example from a Teddy Roosevelt speech, okay? Gives an example, you know, and stuff like that, and then sums it all up, and there's, it's a five-paragraph essay, is what this is part of. Now if you go to the next slide, what you'll see here is this is, we go from that multi-paragraph response we saw, and you get to this combo purpose, okay? This student was taking this poem that we were doing, was taking Teddy Roosevelt speech, was taking some other things that we did in our class, and some other materials, and she was tying them all together into one theme, okay? And that's what we call the combo purpose essay, okay? It's a pretty impressive, advanced feat. So what happens to the other kid? What happens to the kid at the bottom end of the spectrum? So let's look at this one. So this is a student who got a 2. This is one of the students in that 18% that did not meet the standard in writing, okay? "The author made the climb seem challenging because he made the cliff with cracks and stuff like that. When he got to the edge of the cliff, she looked up, the land kept getting steadily steeper as she walked up," okay? Better handwriting, okay, and grammar, but you've got a nice, like, beginning of a paragraph and stuff, but this student made a 2, this student made a 2 on the kneecaps, okay? But this is what they did in the class, and we talk about multiple measurements. You hit the next one, okay? Same assignment, what advice do you give someone who wants to be successful in life? Use Kipling or Henley to speak for you. If you play a sport, you have to risk it all for a championship game, but if you lose, then to start at the beginning and never breathe a word about that one loss again. And then uses quotes from a poem and evidence, and then uses an example from Ender's Game kind of thing. It's multiple sources of evidence, and this is part of a larger five-paragraph essay on this student, too. So all those students, just one of the 18% that didn't meet the standard, this is an example of, much more actually, realistic example of something they could do in the classroom, as far as writing going. And that's one of the things we're doing, because we know what they're going to expect at CBU. And this kid was that 5th grade example, now ready for success and ready for CBU, doing really well, actually made honor roll for the first time, is really doing well, and it's part of that growth that we're looking for. All right, we look at reading. Students proficiency in 8th grade reading, we've always done really well, actually this is one of our lower years. 87% of the students were proficient or above, 13% were not, that comes to six kids, seven kids, I think. And a couple of those kids, we have tests and some other things going on, but pretty good numbers, okay? They're pretty solid, ready to go to CBU, and I think tackle the texts they're going to get, next. Some other numbers, number of books read by 8th graders this school year. So we did a survey, and this was the minimum we have, kids are absent, things like that, I can't remember, but 602 is what we were able to count for this year. With the 7th graders, we're already at 863. Our reading program is mostly independent reading, kids choose. We have large in-class selections, both in my room and the Spalding's room, plus the library. We do a lot in getting them excited about sharing books and things like that, to sort of, they know what's out there, and we're looking for lifelong readers, because that's the kind of practice they get. Yes, we do, like I do poetry every week in class, and we do textual analysis, we do, Stephanie in science does a lot of literacy with reading and textbooks and things like that, but the other half of it is that love of reading, and this sort of goes to that. And here's something else we did with them, sort of, in the spirit of March Madness, we did brackets of young adult books, to find out what's the ultimate YA book. And so, you know, we had the typicals, the Harry Potters, and the Harrison Mees, and the Diary of a Wimpy Kid's, and things like that, and it went all the way down, and our four were, next slide. Our big four were Divergent, which is very hot right now, Hunger Games, Bone, which is a humorous graphic novel, and then Bridge to Terbithia stuck in, and there was a class who was really adamant about it. I sort of threw it on the, I said, I'll throw this one on, it's kind of old, I don't even know if people read it anymore, but this class was hooked on it and wouldn't let it go. So those were the, we had four classes, those are the four things, and I had a bracket off of those four. And Hunger Games wound up winning two of the four classes, so I guess Hunger Games is the UConn.
And it won at CBU.
And it won at CBU, and the library. But they did theirs based on movie books, okay? We did books that you read. The last, the last thing I just want to leave you with is, we talked about this idea, number one, how do you move kids from here to here? Because that's what we're about. But also, what do you do with the kids that are up here already? Like, are we just getting the proficiency, is that good enough? Well, one of the things about our reading scores is two out of three kids were above proficiency, which shows not only an ability to read in a variety of different readings, but then to respond to that reading in a way that's intelligent and communicates, all right?
So substantially above.
Oh, substantially above, yes. This is not just a standard, this is substantially above, two out of three of our 8th graders. So that's what we're doing, that's what we're sending to CBU by the end of our program. And that's pretty consistent every year. Let's make.
And obviously, feel free to jump in and ask questions anytime, or at the end.
Can I ask a question about literacy? You said that independent reading is a big part of it?
Yes.
If they're reading books on their own, do they ever discuss it with a teacher or in a small group?
We do small group, we do, they discuss each other, we do activities that use that, and then we do a thing called reading labs, like, for example, that's what they're doing this week for homework, where they have a series of different prompts, and they choose one of those prompts, and they respond to it. So it might be something like, how does the author create tension, and those kind of questions.
So there is some sort of, there's critical thinking about it, not just.
Yeah, there's a lot of critical thinking, it's not just like, I'm reading yet another, you know, Diary of a Wimpy Kid book, you know? And then we have one-on-one discussions all the time with the kids, because you, one of the things about doing the independent book is you get to see the kind of books they're carrying around, and do you see that book change over a month? Or is it the same Diary of a Wimpy Kid, you're watching the bookmark move, and then we have a lot of really good discussions about what's going on, solving problems. We found out last year, one of our big problems from having these discussions, a lot of kids needed glasses, you know? We found a lot of kids, and they were like, well, they had glasses, but their prescription was from 5th grade, you know, and they don't, and so we got the nurse in there who gave everyone a prescription thing early, you know?
And I would say, yeah, I think there is a cultural of books in our school that has been brilliant over the years, and it's not uncommon to, over your conversations in the cafeteria, in the hallway, about kids, and they're having really kind of critical things, like, yeah, this is a good book, but they don't really develop that character as well, like Divergent, which is hot right now, logically can be compared to Hunger Games, and you hear them talking about, well, the way she set up the relationships, and, I mean, they're going beyond, I think it's cool. Like, they are being very critical.
So like, that bracket exercise we did on the, you know, it's fun, but it was very much like kids deciding, like, well, why would you choose that? And there was a big discussion about Divergent versus Hunger Games, like, why, and I had people stand up and say, make your pitch. And then when Bone was going through that one class, people were like, it's a graphic novel, it doesn't count, it's not real. Or people would say, well, Hunger Games is literature, but this is not. And it would be like, you know, so it was, it's really, we see it all the time, and it's, you know, so I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, Dave, thank you.
So I can talk about social science. So one thing that, just to talk, just put right out there, what is the difference between social science and social studies? So when the district wrote the social science curriculum about eight or nine years ago, there was a really legitimate discussion about the difference between social science and social studies, and a very deliberate choice to call it social science. That being said, 99% of the people call it social studies. Okay, so, and part of the reason, then, the real tie-in for calling it social science was that when we wrote the curriculum, inquiry skills was the anchor. And the inquiry skills that you see in social science are the same exact ones you see in science, and we'll talk about that more. And one thing, too, just to kind of put in there about social sciences, even though Jeff's talked about kind of departmentalization, and there's certain teachers kind of being the, you know, the bug stops there, and math in this room and all this, one of the things that we have going for us as a middle school is that people have, the teachers are certified in multiple areas, and we taught in multiple areas. So I was the language arts teacher for a long, long time. So even though I'm doing social science now, I can do how you write a paragraph, how you write an essay, I can talk to them about books. And in the middle school, what we do is there are times when Tom and I swap out, and I become the language arts person for a couple of days. I mean, in fact, we planned this great outdoor adventure thing, and then it was like 25 below zero that week, so we didn't do it. Around the science fair, I swap out with the science teacher, and I do all the research base, and how to do researching and all that. It's a kind of a real efficient way to be able to do things. Is that the next slide? I'm sorry. So just that, again, in that inquiry framework, so again, this is the same, what you would see in a science one, you know, asking a question, we threw in social historical questions, creating a hypothesis, research plan, doing your research, analysis, interpretation, all that stuff. And again, it's good science. We also are tied into the basics process, which if you have the librarians come in and talk to that, is a way of how you help people find information. So again, we do a lot with literacy, and especially in the 7-8, this is the first year we've had an independent social science class. And I kind of laugh about that, because I was hired in this district to be a social science teacher, and this is the first year I've ever done it, just as a social science teacher. They told me I had to teach English, and I was like, okay. And kind of our, if we talk about what are our premier events every year, it's specing. So the 5th grade does a history fair, 6th grade does a world cultures fair, and the 7-8 is doing something called a century project. In the past, it's been called inquiries, it's been called 20th centuries, it's been called the Ramak Project. And one of the nice things about social science as well is that our topic areas are broad. They talk about change, revolution, and adaptation, so it allows us to morph with what we need to morph with. So the year that Hurricane Katrina destroyed New Orleans, we started with geography, we talked about human environmental interaction, because our curriculum's flexible enough to allow us to go there first. And years we had presidential elections, we do the same thing, you know, we go work to government. Oh, student work, so just some projects, and we had to put some kid pictures in there. This is a beautiful 5th grader, Lasher, that's my daughter.
I was gonna say, looks like your daughter.
I have a lot of gray hair because of that project. And our project looks a different way. So we try to integrate with art. This is actually a religion project, in which kids created illuminated manuscripts, with, you know, the big fancy letter and all that. This is a part of our quidditch tournament. That was part of an integrated project that Tom, Dan and I came and helped along, and we did everything from sewing 57 capes with sewing machines and.
The kids sewed, we didn't sew.
Yeah, but we, I threaded a lot of sewing machines, and Betsy, too, you helped with that. So we try to do a lot of interactive things, and ultimately make children learn to live. Right, social science perspective. So back to that district curriculum that was written about nine years ago, which was written at the same time the state curriculum was written, and we wrote the curriculum at the CSSU level with the help of the person who's helping do the state one. So when we talk about, is our curriculum in line? Yeah, because ours is kind of like the paramount one for the state. So again, our anchor is inquiry skills, and we use inquiry skills to teach geography, historical connections, economics, governance and civics, culture and diversity. So when we look at a topic, we look at World War II, we want to make sure we're covering all of those. Now, in that 5 through 8 continuum, economics is kind of out of reach for a lot of nine-year-olds or 10-year-olds, so, you know, it's going to look a little bit different. Okay, so current events is kind of the classic assignment, so we thought we'd pull this out. This is a 6th grade current event, and I would think this is kind of on the higher end of a 6th grade current event, Paul Lasher gave me this one. So some current, so this is the summary paragraph. So in a classic current event, you have a summary paragraph that's supposed to be factual, then you have a so what, or an opinion paragraph. So we have this one, and then if you go to the next one, this would be your so what paragraph. And one of the things that we're really trying to work on in middle school is that you have that chain between concrete thinking and more abstract thinking, and the ability to make more connections. And one thing that's really tricky about middle school is looking at those kids that Jeff had pictures of, sometimes they're this tall, and they're abstract thinkers, and sometimes they're like this tall, and they're still as concrete as concrete can be. So for example, today, I gave the kids something called a scorecard, and I wanted them to kind of audit each other's work and check off that they had done the different pieces. And they're like, but how do I score it? Do I give it 100? Do I give it five stars? They were so stuck on the word score that they couldn't get past that. And we see that a lot in middle school. Now, this is an 8th grade one, this is from earlier this year. So the current event was about Harvard student tries to dodge exam with bomb hoax. And instead of doing a summary, they said, so what connections does this have to not only history, but to the US Constitution? And they had to make connections, so they made the connection to freedom of speech. And one of our things that we're working on in the middle school this year is this kind of idea of social contract, of what is our responsibility to ourselves and our people? And so we tied into that. And then our next slide is the kind of the so what, that goes with that. And I'm sorry, these came out a little blurry the way we scanned them. And then next, just quick scope and sequence. So one of the things, so since we've gone to more straight grades, the 5th grade has a more American format, the 6th grade does world, and then in the 7-8, we do alternating years. So you get one year of American, one year of world, sometimes you get it as a 7th grader, sometimes you get it as an 8th grader. And depending on our schedule in 7-8, sometimes kids are multi-age mix, and sometimes they're by straight grade. So the way the schedule played out this year is that science and language arts kids are multi-age, and social science, we are straight grade. And then kind of just talking about common core. So when we say, you know, are we ready for common core? So in the area of social science, standards are going to be next to impossible to come up with. It's a very highly contested field of study. You have advocacy groups, like the National Geographic Society, the American Bar Association, I mean, there's these huge advocacy groups that on a national level cannot decide how to do the standards, because it's really hard to teach all of human history and being a good democratic citizen and all that stuff in like 45 minutes' time. It just can't, there hasn't been agreement. And that's part of the reason, when you look at common core, you're going to see English language arts standards, math standards, and science standards, but you're not going to see social science. And it probably will be a while, you know, until we get there. That being said, we're in pretty good shape in terms of, we have higher-order thinking, we know that we're going to be, that's going to be demanded of us. We do use complex text. We started to the shifts in language that we need to have. And we do a lot of tasks, which again, because they're part of that inquiry, that, um, is more of high demand. So for example, what I had my kids do this last week was they had to take notes from an article. Then they could only use those notes to do the next part of the task. That is one of the SBA's sample questions, is that you follow that process. Social science.
Uh, so I want to present for science and, uh, I know that we're running a little bit late. So I'm going to keep it quick, but the, the piece on science, um, you've heard it before. It's, the primary focus is on inquiry, again, getting kids to think deeper. So I'm just going to pass around, this is the inquiry, the yearly inquiry assessment from CSSU. Just to give you a sense of, yeah, if you give us pass it, or take one and pass it down. I also have, uh, science notebooks that, uh, I'm going to leave up here that you can take a look at. And, uh, a couple of lab reports as well. So as I'm talking, after you, I think the inquiry piece is the piece that I think is most helpful to me. When I think about what is science all about? So in fifth grade, these are a couple of the, uh, units that they do. Again, much like Barb said, uh, from inquiry, they teach, uh, you know, starting with inquiry. And then you can teach ecology from inquiry and you can teach Newton's laws from inquiry. So that's what the, the fifth grade does. Paula gets the kids outside as much as he can, uh, natural environments. This, uh, toys fair just happened. The toys that they come up, the, the toys that they come up with every year are phenomenal. Uh, they really are. I mean, for parents that have lived through it, you, uh, you're probably pretty, uh, uh, I don't know, used to the, the, the projects and, and what the kids come up with. But it's a, it's a really cool project and, uh, and for me, it's one of the times where the kids are truly enjoying learning. Like you go, you walk in there and they're so proud to show you how their contraption toy works. Uh, sixth grade, uh, science notebooks are big. There's going to, uh, again, the, the topics in sixth grade are introduction to chemistry, geology, human body, solar system. What I, what I wanted Angela to focus on a little bit is, uh, I know technology has come up a lot at the board level. So, uh, Angela's really used her iPads extensively in science, more so than any other subject area. And the interactive approaches, uh, that are now possible. So this is exploring inside a beating heart. And, uh, these, these are the apps that are available now. So that no longer are you looking at a picture in a textbook, but you're seeing an interactive, um, system. You know, heart system and how it works. Examining inside of a, of a body structure, you know, a hand here. Classifying different types of rocks, building elements, moving tectonic plates. So she's, uh, I'll, I'll also brief us on, uh, the technology meeting that we had today. But she's, she just believes that, that the iPad is a, is an essential piece of her curriculum. You, the, the common theme here is no matter what subject area, writing is a focus. Uh, and in science, it's no different. Uh, the, the team that we have, uh, they all work so well together in, in making sure that they all have a, uh, a, a solid understanding of the expectations. So again, seventh and eighth grade, science is, is really focused on the inquiry piece. And then the lab reports are, uh, going around now. The science notebooks, these are all inquiry based. So if you want to take a look at what a science notebook looks like for sixth through eighth grade, we covered up names, but then there's names inside the book, so just pretend like you don't see them. And then where is science headed? I know, uh, NGSS is something that everybody has heard about. So where, uh, the NGSS were released last year, how are they different? The new standards are based heavily on demanding performance expectations and have a greater focus on engineering. However, I think it says it in the next slide, there is no assessment for the NGSS right now. So really, if we're getting, uh, assessed on how we're doing on the kneecaps, those are based off of the grade expectations, the state grade expectations. So the kneecaps are going to continue for at least three more years. And I, the, only in science. So, uh, so a, a very slow adoption of the new NGSS will begin. If you know Steph and the other science teachers, they're already looking at NGSS. And even though it's a slow adoption, they're already saying, all right, here's how we could tweak this or, or, or do this a little bit different so that when it comes down, we're, we'll be ready. Math. Yes. I'll see if I can answer it. Yeah.
So walking around the school, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we have, I mean, we don't need them anymore, a traditional science lab.
Correct you if you're wrong?
We do not have one.
Uh, there, there is a room that used to be a lab, uh, pre-Jeff. Oh, no?
There's a room that has flammable or non-flammable countertops in it.
So that's.
It was, yeah, it was part of the nineteen ninety-eight construction, probably the, you know, all this stuff. There was, a lab was built as part of that, but it's not, it was never built kind of with a thought of being functional in terms of what teachers needed in terms of the space. It's a room with a lot of sinks in it, in power spaces.
But I think I know where you're going, like.
But yeah, the.
The environment could help with the lab.
Would it be helpful if we had one and what, you know, just, 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 or is it not the way?
As I, I taught science, I mean, recently, so, um, and we used the science lab for a few years. And it was, there was, you know, it had gas and, and we could use buns and burners. But the reality of the content for the most part at the middle level doesn't really require that level. And it was more functional to keep it, because there was one science lab and we all had to take turns using it. And it just became more functional to happen in the classroom. And.
And that's, that's sufficient, that's sufficient.
With the exception of a second sink would be handy, but, and then it's right there as opposed to constantly going to go back and forth between. It just worked better logistically.
So you feel like we're covered the way we're covered currently?
Yeah, well, the science, the science standards don't really match with the acid tables and all that kind of stuff. I mean, it just doesn't. But I, I will say, I mean, the idea of why do you have a science lab? It's a science lab because you're not learning science out of a book. You're not learning, you know, this theoretical thing you're doing. I know Stephanie does, uh, hands-on science at least every two weeks, like they're doing labs. It's just the number of bodies even fits better in her room and the amount of tables than it does with that. I mean, last, we were finally getting the smell from the sheep hearts though, Angela did, you know, and you saw Paul's things, a lot of outside work. So it's just, it looks nice, like it, look, you think, science, like it makes sense, but it doesn't make sense.
One of the biggest issues we have around not having or doing labs and things in classrooms is there's not electrical power. You know, it's like you're running, you know, cords and power strips and things like that. That's one of the, like whenever Steph is eating things up, that's the biggest issue, you trip all the, the breakers and stuff like that.
So much cheaper alternative. We were at an after-school conference and there's some sort of research out there that if, if young kids had lab coats on, that they actually thought that they were scientists and the, the amount of work. So we bought the after-school program, white lab coats for the, like the K, K twos. And it is hilarious to see, I'm like, my daughter's, you know, she's like, dad, I'm a scientist, so. Yeah, but it's kind of the environment. You put your, you put yourself in that environment, you put, and, and all of a sudden, magic happens, so.
Um, so I'm going to look, I teach some of the eighth grade math, but I'll look at fifth through eighth grade math. In fifth grade, they've been using bridges, it's a standards-based program. District-wide, next year, they are purchasing the new version of it, which will be Common Core aligned. And so I presume there'll be some shifting around of topics within that. The other big focus that's still there in the middle school is on fact fluency. And they're doing a lot with fast math and assessing them regularly. The future move is to get that so the kids know it before they're going to fifth grade. So that the middle level isn't really doing as much with fact fluency, except with the kids who didn't quite master it. Um, so that should be a lot less. Sample fifth grade work. So at the beginning of fifth grade, I'm just going to take one topic and we'll look at fifth grade and eighth grade. In fifth grade, they're just learning how to graph on a coordinate plane. And I think this is even like time, like literally hours and not like a regular coordinate grid that you would use in algebra. And that's even like, oh no, it is numbers and numbers, sorry, for a second I thought it was letters. So that's where they're beginning with coordinate graphing and in a little while, we'll see an eighth grade topic. So sixth to eighth grade, we just purchased the new CMP curriculum, which is Common Core aligned. And there's been a lot of shifting in where topics went, there are eighth grade topics that went to seventh grade, seventh grade, they went to sixth grade, sixth grade, they went to seventh grade. So a lot's been shifted around so that it is aligned with Common Core. And the eighth grade books, they are marketing the eighth grade CMP books as an Algebra I curriculum. That there's two units from within that, that when you put with the other units, becomes a full Algebra I curriculum. And what we are doing is including those two books in what we're teaching to the eighth graders so that they're getting the full Algebra I curriculum. But we're not holding every single kid accountable. It's kind of the kid and parent choice to some extent about whether they're going to be held to that standard of the Algebra I. But they're all getting the exposure. Best practices, my understanding is you've heard a fair amount about, so I've learned. But anyway, that's being implemented school-wide and we're still doing it. So here's an example of an eighth grade problem, and this is an algebra unit. So at a school band concert, these two kids are selling memberships for the booster club. An adult membership is ten dollars, a student membership is five dollars. At the end of the night, they've sold fifty memberships and they have four hundred dollars. And they're trying to go back and figure out, well, how many student and how many adult memberships did they sell? And so we went, this is the problem I did the past couple of days. They went through and they wrote equations to represent it. And then they, these are two different students' graphs of those equations. And the end result was they looked for the, where did the graph intersect? And this is, you know, writing on it. And this is what's being put up in front of the room that the kids are then talking about. And that's where the best practices piece comes in. Because they're right up in the front of the room, this is their work, I can capture it with a, with an image thing from the document camera. And they can talk about it and they can write on each other's works and have that class conversation. But they went from simply learning how to graph coordinate pairs to using that as a way to solve a problem.
And this, this is where I get to chime in too somewhere. So I, I, maybe Jeff told you, maybe you didn't, but, so I'm a special educator, but I co-teach with Maria in the eighth grade math classes, both of them, every day. So this is literally yesterday's problem. And so Maria gave you the big picture, but we zeroed in on this one because it's, it's kind of the little picture. But it was interesting to see how all the things that she just talked about are reflected in this. So first of all, it's a Common Core-aligned problem. Second of all, it's one of the problems in one of these two added books that, that comprise the additions that give us, you know, exposure to the full algebra curriculum. And then the way that it was implemented in class was, was everything we would hope that best practices would be giving us. So we started with just orienting ourselves to the problem, which it seems to be a fundraiser that I must have been in charge of because we know how much we made and how many we sold, but we're pretty unclear on the details of what, what was the deal. So what they're trying to figure out is like, okay, how, we made four hundred bucks. How many of them were adults and how many of them were kids? Because we lost that, right? We didn't keep track. And so the kids began by being oriented as a full class to the problem, just as we are here. And then went into private reasoning time and, and worked to make sense of and to write these two separate equations, which is thinking about the total amount of money and how that relates to the membership sold. And then thinking about the total number of memberships that we sold. We know we sold fifty and we know we made four hundred bucks. So they, they were working on these things in private reasoning time. And then we pulled them out and they explained their thinking and they listened to understand. And so if you think about the, the habits of mind, some of them at that point are very much with their partner, making sense of the problem. Like two girls are sitting there, they both have work in front of them and, and each is trying to say to, to the other and to me, like, I don't have anything. I didn't, I didn't get this, right? I don't have anything to share. So one girl's got four hundred equals. And above that, she's got all sorts of written, stuff written about it, it's ten dollars for an adult and five dollars for a kid, like much farther along than she thinks, right? The other girl, not honestly, uh, you know, a girl who would identify herself as a super math thinker, is telling me, yeah, I don't, I didn't get it, I don't have anything to share. She's got that written in her journal, right? So they just start talking to each other and, and, and revoicing each other's, other's thinking. And as they increasingly do that without jumping in or criticizing the, or critiquing the thinking, it's amazing to me how the kids are like, oh. As they're, as they're, as they're listening to their own thoughts reflected back to them, like, oh, yeah. And they, they move forward and we put them back into private reasoning time and multiple pathways. They graphed them differently. So one of these is adults on one axis and students on this, and this is the flip-flop. So they're, they're continuing to work through the problem, again, now individually, but, but with slightly different approaches and then coming back together. And there was not a kid in the classroom that I talked to, and I made a point of, of going around, who did not understand what that point of intersection meant. Like every single kid that I checked in was able to articulate, that's the point where they both made four hundred bucks and sold fifty memberships. Like every, and, and, you know, so spot checking probably got around to four different pairs, that's eight different kids. Like everybody got it. And this, this is again, one of these units that Maria hasn't done in the past and I'm new to the curriculum. But it was really very powerful lesson and all those things were reflected there.
Thank you.
Now, if this were the end of my presentation as a student in class, she would make me say, any questions?
I know that ran a little long, I'm sorry, but, uh, if there's any questions, speak now.
I do have one question. So I just need some clarification so I can talk to parents. So I've heard from some parents, some discussion about how algebra was taught last year versus how algebra is being taught this year in the eighth grade level. And I just want clarification on, not so importantly, what happened last year, what's happening this year? And are you comfortable with how algebra is being taught now in the classroom for the pair of kids that go to see you?
All right, I can answer on the CSSU level and then I'll, I'll let Maria jump in. But, uh, this is the first year that we've, we've gone to, uh, this new thinking, Algebra for All. And at the CSSU level, there's, there's math meetings that, uh, are scheduled, uh, pretty regularly throughout the year so that Maria can, uh, and Jen can come together with colleagues to see how, see how everybody in CSSU is, is learning about this new ideology, more or less. And, uh, I think, I think there's some frustration at some points. And I also think that, much like what Jen just said, is that if she went around and checked in with every single student, every single student knew what that point of intersection was. So there's a piece of me too that, that wants us to persevere through the challenges because the, the ideology behind it is that if the students are exposed to it, they have a chance. And if they're not exposed to it, then, then they're never given that chance. So with that said, uh.
I mean, like anything you do, there are ways, there are pluses and minuses to everything. There's a large group of students for which it's working very well and they're making some gains and getting exposure because they might not have chosen to do the algebra seminar and they're getting exposure. There are some students for which it's a little overwhelming. And they're not having as much success with that. And so it's, you know, it's, it's, I think, like, like any teaching thing, there's going to be kids it works better for and kids it doesn't work as well for. And then what we need to do is strive to make sure, now that we've done this once, how can we improve it so that it really is meeting every kid's need? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I guess my question is, is, maybe you don't want to answer it, but do you feel good about, about it? And you think, you know, I guess my concern would be, you have kids who aren't at standard in eighth grade at math, being kneecap scores. Can they accept the challenge of algebra? And secondly, a concern you hear from parents in the community is a little few, you know, it's a handful I've talked to is, is, are those kids who are high learners in math, excelling the way they could be, are they being helped back by the Algebra for All? And, 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 you know, I just, you know, it's, I guess, I just want, if you're willing, to give your honest assessment. And I appreciate the fact that, and I'm not looking for a yes, no answer or we should throw it all away. We just want to make sure that we're, we're tweaking the model to meet everyone's needs, I guess is really.
And that's what I was going to say, is that in the first year of implementation, it's hard, it's hard to, uh, see if it's, if it's a successful model. What I would look at is the percentage of kids that are, are moving into geometry in high school as a, as it related to, to last year's numbers. And then not only that, but, uh, the success rate of the kids that go into Algebra I at the high school level that have already gotten that exposure, uh, at the eighth grade level. So it's not only looking at the kids that have made it to geometry as a compared, you know, percentage-wise with the students last year, but it's also building that success for the students who do have to take Algebra I again in the high school, but have already had that, that really core basic foundation, so.
And I, since I'm reinventing myself as a math teacher, I used to be a high school teacher, right? But now I'm going to be a math teacher. I would, I would just add in that Maria and I have multiple, have had multiple conversations about.
about the fact that differentiating in math feels very different than it did for me when I was a high school teacher. Like, it poses unique challenges. And whether it's Algebra for All or the seventh grade math class, you know, the challenges there are real and they're different, I think, than subject areas. And so we're sort of continuing to work through those. As somebody who maybe is more attuned to the end that might be the most frustrated by this, I will say that as I see those kids kind of amazed themselves by what they do understand despite lagging computational skills or, you know, other missed pieces along the way, you know, I do see ways in which it's a real struggle and a challenge, but I also see ways in which it's been really powerful with them. But it's also for me, kind of my first full big-on exposure to Best Practices too. And it's hard to tease out which is which, but I think Best Practices also is having a very powerful effect on the way those kids see themselves as children in high school. And at the other end, you know, we're constantly looking for, how do we help? And I know it's always in Maria's brain, like, how do we help the people who are those mathematicians who are ready, see themselves that way and are ready to fly? You know, I've been checking out, like, oh, what's this challenge questions board? And, you know, constantly looking for that. You can even speak pretty, I just say Tom's hands up.
I was going to say, I think, I mean, we're pretty committed to heterogeneous classes. There's a lot of benefits. And I'll say, if you try to peg the kids who you think, oh, this kid's ready, so much growth happens in the two years that we have on the, it's just amazing. And kids learn in different ways. I mean, you talk about kids, oh, if we just focused on math, you're right. We could take, you know, we could track them and all that kind of stuff. But they get all these different things and different ways of thinking that really pay off in all these different ways. That said, our, you probably know that our class sizes are growing. And so when we look at, so we look at Maria's, when we look at her program, and we have had these discussions as a middle school, we look at, and I see it in literacy and I see it in other things, is pushing those kids is a priority that we have. And 47% of the math kids on the kneecaps were above proficiency. And 2/3 of the reading, as I showed on that slide, were. And so we do push them and we do get them, but it is hard. It's not, and so we are tweaking. So probably next year we'll look a little bit.
I appreciate that.
And the year after that.
The genesis of my question really is, and I appreciate your candor, was just to make you aware, if I were aware, aware that this is discussion in the community. Sounds a few folks got a tattle, that's wonderful, so, thank you.
Certainly, we know that we're spending a lot of energy thinking about that and how to make that work for everybody.
And I think part of the challenge of the Best Practice approach to math, because I know I got sent to go take that, and I'm sitting there taking, you know, looking at the problem, and I haven't thought about math since Reagan was in office. And it's quite seriously like, you know, I don't do... I know, but it's, and I'm sitting next to the Charlotte, the math coordinator, somebody who identified themselves as a math coordinator. And we were, you know, the way it's set up, we were in the same place. You know, just two adults with a competent math note. We were in the same exact place. It's a very different approach and, you know, a lot of, until you kind of like understand the whole Best Practice, which is hard to do unless you're in it. And that's, you know, I think that's the communication piece that we could do better at, that, you know, we talk about that in literacy a lot. We talk about like, the books kids read today are not the ones you read when you were in middle school. Like, things have evolved and changed, and math has evolved and changed. It's trying to help people understand that. But I would like to chime in too, because this is kind of our thing. Looking at this room, so you know, there's seating for 22 in this room, and it feels very spacious. We're running really big classes and we're, you know, we're at, kind of, we're bulging. And we really, that's a message that I think is with seven, eight, really, we would like to speak to. We have classes of 28 and 29. And if you, you know, want to stand and lecture, you could have 290. But if we want to have hands-on and moving around, we are literally tripping over each other, trying to, you know, you have to shimmy by tables to try to get from one room to the other, you know, end of the room to the other. And middle school kids, there was a great office incident this week, which when a kid went, lost control of his foot. Right? Lost control of his foot, which accidentally hit somebody else. You know, the kids, they're like...
It happens.
You know, they're puppies, they're moving around, they're awkward, you know? They've got stuff with them, binders and things like that. And we are very concerned for lots of reasons, from safety, from, you know, best instruction, doing the best kind of program we can of the size of our groups.
So the short answer is, we're very aware of it. And also, we're shifting, because we're looking at scheduling for next year. We're looking, because we haven't sat down for the scheduling committee yet. We're looking at all those options, you know, how can we do it? Small group, large group, all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
Well, great, thanks a lot, thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
It's only leaving.
So they're moving, is the social emotional for five different areas? Is that happening every day?
No, so the socially emotional, right, time happens every day for 20 minutes. When time happens every day, at the end of the day, for 20 minutes. So in case somebody needs extra clarification on an assignment or anything like that.
I didn't want to keep you... We're seeing Jeff.
The Friday challenge is a 40-minute block on Fridays. And then, obviously, you know, kids learn best sometimes in unstructured environments. So the lunchroom is a perfect place to...
Okay, so they're getting this every day?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's very cool. Great model.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to come to me.
All right, 5.0, reports to the board.
No, no, they're, I'm in charge of it, yeah. Steph would tell me if I didn't come back or something, so.
So the principals report, I'm sure you've already seen it. I just want to highlight a couple of things. Our kindergarten orientation went really well. Not as many kids as we thought we would have. I got a lot of positive feedback from the parents about having eighth graders come, which was...
Historically, our spring registration has always been a little lower than our actual. But I can't remember the spread. Do you have any...
From what, in conversation with Jeff, I don't think we'll get another 20 kids.
Yeah, but 10 maybe?
Pardon me?
10 maybe?
Maybe. So we're looking at three kindergarten teachers for next year and doing some shifts and, but we're on top of that. And I, the other thing I just think is a wonderful program, and I'm really glad it's at Heinsburg, is the Girls on the Run program. That is a phenomenal thing. And you can just see all the parents that are already helping out with that. It's for girls in grades three through five. 30 of them are doing it right now and they're having a blast. It is so much fun to see that. It's so, it's not just about running. There's a lot of pieces to it. It's very empowering. So I was really pleased to see that that's at Heinsburg too. So I know we're, lots of things to talk about, but...
And it's parent-driven, the program, right?
There is, there's a staff member on it, but she's also a parent.
She's also a parent.
Right. So, yeah, it's great. It really is great. And I'm told the jump rope for heart is really fun. So I can't wait to have, see that too. All the kids keep talking about...
You're participating, I signed you up.
No. All the kids are talking about Ms. Last, so I don't know what, they're like, are you going to be there, Ms. Last? Are you going to be there? So I can't wait to see what that's all about.
She's the pro.
Double dutch.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. 5.2, CSSU debrief. What should we tell you? So the common topic was about the technology audit. And it sounds to, sounds like CSSU has some work to do to work on consistency across all the schools in the SU. What else did we talk about? I don't have my agenda handy. Colleen, do you have your agenda, maybe, if there's anything else that Warren's highlighting? We're going to talk about the job share in a minute.
Yeah, just, I would say, maybe think about whether or not food service entering into conversation with other school districts about food service is something that we would advocate for. And that might be an opportunity at the retreat, perhaps. But, you know, we should hear about that if that's of interest.
Okay. And, you know, two other big things that we are, that we're monitoring at the SU is where we get reports, that's in the COLT report. But clearly, there's things going on in Montpelier that are going to affect us governance and financing-wise. We did get a little bit, I don't know, it hasn't been passed yet, but we at least got some word on not a 7 cent increase, but a 4 cent increase.
Yeah, it's very likely the H89 financing stuff will, they have to do something, so that'll prevail. The governance one is open for testimony tonight, depending on how that goes. We'll decide whether the conversation continues or not.
No, I agree. Thank you.
I think everything else was in materials that everyone had access to.
Yep, I think so. 5.3, facilities committee. Kathy, you have anything?
I was sick for the last meeting, so I asked Jeff.
So Bob and I smiled at one another.
We're leaderless without you. The topics we're going to talk about when we do get back together are kind of revisiting enrollment and trying to get a good handle on that, connecting with the town to better understand whether the growth that we're all witnessing in housing has anything we should, you should be aware of relative to increase in enrollment, or whether it's just, that's already in the forecast or not, so we're going to test that. And then Jeff and Allegra are going to take a look at, kind of informing the lens of, what are the issues this year, next year, and the third year? Because likely, if you started doing something of a major portion, it would take a number of years to be brought online, so.
And maybe, this is not a question that needs an answer right now because it's too complicated an answer, but Colleen was kind enough to gather some materials back in December. Historic materials on expansion back years ago. And some restrictions that we have on development in the future. It would be nice to understand what exactly we can and can't do.
I'd be happy to go through that at some point.
That could all dovetail with the governance change too down the road in a weird way, right?
No, I think what I was referring to is restrictions on...
Property boundaries.
Property boundaries and building capacity and square footage on the piece of land that we have.
And you might be talking about the ability to move kids around.
We may not have to, the governance change, we may not have to...
That is true.
...increase the footprint of the building if we can allocate resources.
That is true.
So it all comes under, it all dovetails.
The other interesting thing that's occurring, and I'd have to be candid with just because of the humor involved with the timing, is, do you remember like, three years ago, you thought it would be a good idea to have a conversation with Charlotte?
Yes.
And you were sufficiently rebuffed?
Yes.
Is that a good way to describe it?
They weren't ready to play.
Or disabused of the notion that maybe there should be a conversation?
I would defer to Bill as the one who was...
They're becoming, they're becoming more inclined to, maybe there is a need for a conversation.
Timing is everything.
Yeah.
So anyways, just interesting being, I happen to sit on both groups, and there's, there's kind of just an interesting shift occurring. And you have to remind yourself which town you're in and which setting you're in because it, the notes have kind of changed.
Yeah, well, that's...
So we'll, news at 11.
Like everything, it's about the money, right?
Yes, it is.
And what's best for kids?
Want to add some...
Thank you, Colleen. You're right.
The, in terms of the housing, we were going to try to figure out if Bill Smith's projections did know about the large new development at Haystack Crossing. I understand we have some time because the town is out of water allocations. And until they fix that, the state won't allow any new hookups. So we've probably bought a couple of years in terms of...
18 months a minimum is what I've heard.
18?
18 months minimum.
But then you got to build the housing, so. So that's one thing we need to figure out. We also, and that must be part of your three-year look of what we can do within our existing footprint because there is opportunity within our existing footprint. And then, lastly, I had two select board members say how much they appreciated it when we got together. And both of them asked if we were looking to put together a capital budget with the thought that we might be coming to them for impact fees. And my understanding is the capital budget has to meet a very, there's a formula you have to meet, and...
You have to have enrollment that directly drives the building project. And that portion would qualify for impact fees. So the first thing to do is wrestle enrollment to the ground. And then see if because of the enrollment, you're going to have to do something.
Yeah.
And then, yes, it's best to consider those early on rather than later.
All right. Thank you. 5.4, technology committee.
So I did go.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I was really glad that I went. And I know it's, just piggybacking on the tech audit, Heinsburg is in a really great place and with technology in terms of access for students. So, again, staying within the budget that we created and just looking at making learning more mobile and not desktops. We're going to be able to provide the seventh and eighth grade with Chromebooks next year. So the sixth graders will have iPads. The seventh and eighth grade students will all have a Chromebook. So sixth through eighth will all be one-to-one. Fifth grade will be given half of the iPads that the seventh grade currently has as a class set that they'll share between two teachers. We're going to be allocating the rest of the iPads to the K4s to begin to allow them to have the exposure. And the people that are against technology, not against technology, but question, there's two things I want to say is, one, is that with all this technology, students are still reading books and writing by hand. You saw it in the presentation. So I think some people think that once you have technology, you know, opening a book no longer happens. That's not true. And then the second piece is that we've spent some time at the CSSU level looking at the S-Back, this new assessment that's coming out. And it is an online test where I think our worry is that the technology could get in the way of showing what a student knows. If they can't manipulate a computer in the third grade, if they can't, if they can't type, then they're going to be so worried about how much time it's taking them to write a paragraph. So our first grade students just got online with the Type to Learn program. So, you know, we're already putting systems in place for two years down the line, and...
Our second grade teachers are meeting with our technology educator to see how they can start preparing. Because the S-Backs won't happen in the fall, they'll happen in...
The spring.
The spring, so it's not...
A year from now.
But they need to start thinking about that now. You know, we split screen, that's kind of a weird thing, and so we got to make sure kids are used to that. Just being able to manipulate the up and down and highlighting. So we're trying to get all of that figured out because we don't want kids to have that be the holdup for them.
But we have laptops that are currently used by the eighth grade students that are also going to be reallocated down to the lower grades. So, I mean, we're, we're schools now are taking a look at what they have for technology and building a budget for trying to get this technology. And we've been pretty planful in not knowing that S-Back was going to be requiring this. But I'm glad we went in that direction because we're in a very good spot.
I've also been talking with the head of the Part II program because, to see if she can start doing Type to Learn with some of those kids as part of what they're doing after school. It's, they, it'd be a great opportunity for them to get, you know, 15 minutes on so they can keep going with that program, so. Trying to think everything.
Well, I would just reiterate what we heard at the SU board meeting that there, it sounds like there's adequate, more than adequate resources available in the SU schools, but not necessarily the professional development to be able to implement its effective use.
Or...
Consistent, I would say.
Consistent, yeah. Yep, yep. I think it varies from school to school and from person, classroom to classroom. Thank you. 6.0, discussion matters. 6.1, K8 calendar. This is in our materials. If you recall, last month we adopted a regional calendar. This is now the SU's K8 calendar for next year within the confines of that regional calendar. Does anyone want to speak to it or any questions?
I don't know. When I first got on the board, I used to think I had some impact on, could have some impact on calendar, and now I've given up.
No, we got rid of half-days.
We got rid of half-days.
But, yeah, I mean, it's so driven by our regional system.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah.
It's pretty much the same as this year's, isn't it?
It's remarkably similar, although I don't recall having those two days off in October similar to what with the old union meeting.
We always have it. We had one this year.
I think we had one this year. And it looks like we have the Monday before-town meeting off, whereas we didn't this year.
No, we didn't.
We did?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been, that's been for a couple of years.
With school vacation the day after.
Oh, well, we had a meeting that night, that's why I remember. All right, so I guess we adopt it next month? 'Cause it looks like a discussion matter, we don't have to act on it. All right, six point two, boards' corners, or just board communication in general. I did send a letter to the Heinsberg Record last week for publication in the next issue. They have a very elaborate confirmation process for letters to the editor. If you'll recall, there was a incident a few years ago with a fictitious or some sort of faulty letter to the editor, so now they, they have an elaborate confirmation process. I think I called her back in time to meet the deadline.
Did you write this, is that what this is all about?
Yes.
And what was the letter?
The letter was thanking the community for supporting our budget in March. So I guess we could think about if we have any in the future, so put your thinking hats on if you wanna communicate anything to our public.
I'm thinking, there are a couple of things, but one would be, at some point, and maybe that comes from the school, but some point clarifying our staffing for next year. We might want a statement about that, 'cause we made some decisions, or. And then maybe facilities, at some point getting people to start thinking about facilities. I don't know.
We'll take direction if, if there's something, yeah.
On facilities, I, I, I'm, I'm a little, I'm thinking it's premature.
Sounds like you need to get the enrollment thing figured out first.
Yeah, I think we need to know a little bit more about ti, you know, the, what's gonna happen with that development and the timing of it.
Are we doing anything with the white building? This summer, just patching and pasting and anticipating that we need to have further discussions about.
I think, Tim and Jeff have done a, a pretty good job of shifting gears in the white building, and I think the white building's ready to, any major issues that we would've put on a list are, are kinda taken care of, but I, I think, I think the conversation earlier is like three years out, probably the facilities committee needs to also meet with Tim and kinda get a handle on, given the fact that you're, you as a board aren't gonna be heading back to facilities investments until a major one a number of years out, what, what should we have on the screen for the next one, two, or three years that either's gonna be taken care of in your general fund budget or gonna need for a separate article? So we'll work on that long prior to the October timeframe.
I just know as a community member, that's something I would be interested in, 'cause we've been sort of holding the white building out there as.
And it doesn't seem that significant, but the fact that we're anticipating only three kindergarten teachers next year, that has a huge impact on the three-year. I, I was kind of assuming that there was gonna be four every year at least, so it, it buys us. It's amazing that, that, that one, you know, that one room, but.
Well, that's why I was thinking, you know, our staffing levels for next year, whatever they are, and configurations, that will be of interest in just starting to think about the white building, 'cause at one point we were gonna, you know, think about leasing it out, and at another point we were gonna.
The white building, it went through minor cosmetic changes last year in order to make the rooms usable and nice, but I mean, like, like Bob said, I mean, there's, there's not gonna be anything huge that we could do to the white building to maximize more space.
No, we did take care of the elevator, took care of other, you know, things that needed to be taken care of short-term, and in case you're in the community, it has flipped. If the conversation, someone in the community last left was renting the white building, that's no longer.
It's being used.
That, that's not on earth.
Yeah, I, every, every room in the school is being used.
But I think that Colleen's point, maybe, Mr. Tuck, what she's saying is it's, there are often questions in the community about, who's, how many kindergartens are gonna be next year, and who's teaching, no, exactly, assigned, who's teaching what assigned, but the plan is this, and the, the sooner we can get that out to the community, just a nice little, you know, informal letter would be, would be nice, so.
Are you to the community or to the school?
Yeah, that's, I'm wondering if this is a board thing or a, a principal report.
That's, that's kinda what I'm hearing.
I know people in the community ask.
I think I asked the question.
No, what I, what, I'm sorry, what, what I'm, what I'm hearing from you guys is information that parents care about.
Correct.
Not necessarily that non, uh, community members who are not involved in the day-to-day life of the school.
It seems like the community would wanna know, yes, we are using the white building, we still have plans to use it, we have twenty semi-classes, and this is what, I mean, I think in general terms, the more specific thing, we're going to get that out as soon as it's all settled with the specifics to parents, I can't imagine, but I think you're right with the community, that would be, we are using it, it's not, you know, this is what is being used for, this is why we need it, is that?
And it may be, I, because I missed the enrollment meeting. Bye, Kathy. I, you know, there may have been conversation about it, but, so I may have missed.
All right, seven point O, action items. Seven point one, we have to do some further board reorganization, 'cause we didn't finish it all in March. So did we appoint a vice chair? It says we need one, I can't remember.
We just lost Kathy.
Yeah.
Have you had a conversation with her?
I, briefly, yes, yes. She won't be involved in any, well, she might be involved in one of these. We did not appoint a vice chair, is that correct?
Correct.
So we need a vice chair.
It can't be us.
Do you plan on making all the meetings?
What?
Do you plan on making all the meetings?
I hope to, but God forbid I get hit by the real boss.
If you plan on making.
Bad analogy.
If you plan on being here, I'd be happy to volunteer myself to do that, everyone else would.
I don't think it should be me.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
Everyone's happy with that.
Whoever wants to, I'm happy to vote for them.
I, no, I, I'm an advocate of us developing leadership.
Do we need a motion for that?
Is Kathy interested or not?
We need a motion, so then I need a motion, can we do it all together for all these offices?
Yes, you can, I'll, I'll.
All right, let's do that.
I'll license that efficiency.
So clerk, do we have, we do not have a clerk yet. Did I hear that you would be willing to serve as clerk? Great, Kathy agreed to serve.
It's a great way to learn about the school and, kind of, from the ground up.
Yeah.
Kathy did agree to either continue or at least be assistant clerk, I think she's the clerk now.
That's fine.
That's correct, yeah.
We need a CSSU board rep, me and Colleen are two of them, and I'm hoping Mr. Baker would be the third.
Sure.
Okay, and then we need a technology committee member, you have done that in the past, but I understand the timing of the meeting is difficult.
I think I made two all year, so it's just, that, that three o'clock time schedule kills me.
Did Stacy, did you sign up for that last time?
Nope, uh, Pi.
Oh, Pi.
She's the Pi rep.
Should we leave it open for now?
I mean, I think we'll have.
I think it's unfortunate that Kathy's not here for this.
Well, I don't think, I don't know that she would be interested or willing to serve in the technology committee, I didn't get the sense she would be.
It's hard, I think all of us work five hours.
I can do my, I know that it's the committee, and I can't be a part of, but I mean, I'm gonna do my best to be there and report out, so.
Yep.
So we'll leave it open for now.
Yeah, that's okay, doing all but that one.
Why don't we do that?
You made, you made a big headway.
I could, I could do it remotely, but that's a.
So I need a motion then to appoint those individuals to those offices.
Can I make a motion? I'll make a motion to appoint those individuals to those offices.
All right, I like that, thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here are none, the motion carries. All right, seven point two, I pulled the annual meeting minutes out, Jess, I have two corrections. There's a, there's language that says Lisa is resigning from her position, her position actually, her term expired, I think we should say that. And, and then at the, at the end, there's some language that I think showed up from last year's minutes, 'cause it, it talks about how I went through the budgets since 2006, and then Colleen presented the 2014 budget with a large increase, and I think those two paragraphs were both from last year's. Sure, no problem, no problem.
I was able to do some time traveling.
Well, that's right, you were stranded.
I was stranded by snow. I was in Indianapolis.
Sorry, I'm a bit confused.
No sweat. Seven point three, a job share, so, wow, let's see, how do I need to introduce this? So if you'll recall, due to statute, special ed has moved to the SU, so all special education, budget, staff, et cetera, are held at the SU, but clearly that affects personnel and program in our individual building. We need to, there, a decision needs to be made now on a job share request for special educators in our building. Normally, we will, we would talk about it at the local, and then the SU would act on it the following month, but we just didn't get around to doing that, and a decision needs to be made now. So at the SU meeting, the SU board.
Authorized.
Delegated authority to us to say yea or nay on this job share request. So we need to hear about the job share request and then say yea or nay.
Did you hear anything about it?
No, no, other than that there was one in Heinsberg.
Okay, so have you received it as part of your board packet?
It was, it was.
CSSU board members did.
I think we got information that was just general in terms, right?
We, we got the policy, and I thought Sandy had sent the request in a separate email, was that to the SU board members?
Well, can we just give them an overview?
Yeah.
I can give you an overview, I'm just.
Assume they haven't seen anything other than the two pages Elaine gave them on the background policy and protocols with job shares.
Okay.
Okay.
And just protocol, I can say names at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Karen Poole, who is a special educator in our building, she, this year has been on, was granted a leave for, from one point O to point eight for this year, so she was granted that last year for this coming year. And another woman named Susan Crasnow, who's a special educator at CVU, has been coming over, and my understanding is being paid per diem to kind of fill those things that need to be filled. It's, it's worked out really well for us, it's worked out well for these two women, and plus, all the way around, worked out great for kids. So in order to continue that, since she had already been granted a leave once, realized that probably would not be something that's sustainable, and started looking at the job share option. I can tell you, I don't know how specific you want to be, but it would be point eight for Karen Poole, and point two for Susan Crasnow, and it would be more specific than it's, it's much more specific than it was this year, so she would definitely, Susan Crasnow would definitely be there all Friday, she would case manage a couple of students who receive their education not at Heinsberg, but in different, in a different format or different places, which would be really helpful for us, it's a lot of work that needs to happen, but not with kids right at school. Karen would have more, Ms. Poole would have more time to be working with kids throughout the day, case managing them, and Susan, they have a, they've developed their weekly schedule, they know how they're gonna be communicating, they've talked about faculty meetings, professional development, they've really been very specific about their timeline and how everything will work out, and feel very confident that we've had a lot of conversations about this with them, and I feel very confident that this is a great job share proposal.
And the request that is being made is for a particular duration?
For one year only, yep. So how, have you ever done a job share before?
Yeah, so I, I would just like to make a motion to accept the administrator's recommendation for the job share.
Right, now we can talk about it, yeah.
Was, was, okay, was that clearly made, an administrative recommendation made?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, Colleen has a motion on the table?
Questions now, or questions?
Well, I need a second, and then we can have discussion, yes.
On second motion.
All right, thank you.
And just remember personnel, so.
Sure. Question is, I guess you answered, do you recommend this?
Yes, I do.
Is it cost neutral?
Uh, no, it's, well, some of that depends on health insurance, if they take it, they.
We can't talk about it.
It can't, yeah.
The, the real, the, the better answer would be yes, assume it is.
Right.
Whenever you change personnel, you're gonna, you're gonna be exposed to change in benefit electance, but you're taking a one point O open position and filling it one point O with two people, part of the job share protocol is one person ends up with rights to the job, the other is the job sharer, or sharer, that doesn't get benefits, and it, she's, she's serving the point two at the discretion of the point eight.
However, she is at, just to be, she is at CVU sometime, so that's where.
But the point is, it's one point O FTE, one point O FTE.
And the question, I think since you recommend it, recommending it, I know the answer will ask anyway, it's the best thing for the kids that you're seeing.
Yep, I, I believe that, and just for the job share, this is Karen Poole's position, so next year she will be given a full STE contract, and if she wants to do the job share again, she would need to do this all over again, and you would approve it all over again.
Thank you.
I'm confused why it's good for the kids for a different person to be there one day a week. That's a good question, I probably didn't explain it correctly. Wait, you explained it, but I wasn't getting it, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. I was trying real hard. I know, this is, this has been an interesting thing, bad and back and forth, because I had, well, never mind, I had planned to do this, and then it was going to the SU board, so I kind of put it away, and then two minutes before we came here, I was told that, oh, you need to do this again, so.
We applaud your flexibility.
Yeah, work with me here. So Karen Poole is going to be the one seeing the kids for their, what's required for the IEP services at school. So with Susan Crasnow there, she would be doing some testing of kids that needs to happen every three year, three years, she would be managing the, those cases that Karen would have had to do that are kids outside of the school, so that's really more management, not instruction.
So it's a differentiation of the roles.
It's really, yes.
And the roles are divided in such a way that the point two doesn't have any effect on the, what point eight would be doing.
It really, it, it focuses Karen's time to be with kids directly. And the Friday, whatever day of the week, that she's not there. Those, those kids don't have needs on that day. I'm sorry, I didn't explain it right. Karen is there one day a week. Yeah. I mean, Susan would be there one day a week, Karen is there five days a week. Oh, okay, got it. And just leaving early. Yeah, no, I'm good. Okay. Okay. I was, thank you for that, I. I was just trying. Yeah, I don't blame you, yep, I don't blame you, yep, it wasn't clear. Okay.
Are you ready for the question? All right, all those in favor? And any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries, thank you very much. Eight point O, consent agenda, what's left on there are the March nineteenth minutes and the director's orders, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Bill, do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine point O, director's comments.
Looking forward to the play.
That's what I was gonna say.
Oh, you should be.
Go to the play.
It is so good.
Friday and Saturday nights.
K four saw it today.
So I heard.
It was actually really.
I haven't heard how it was, it was this morning when they were leaving.
I heard Ursula didn't have purple, that was my report, my six-year-old.
Well, in the morning though, that we were getting some, some kids who were a little nervous, we found out, so quickly, they pulled this together this morning for the K twos to go and meet Ursula as the eighth grade student, as, and then, and then they, and the, who were the slimy ones?
Tentacles, tentacles.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
No, the tentacles, but also the eels, 'cause they get kinda scary too.
Flotsam and jetsam.
Right, they get scary too, and so they, it was so, you should've seen the kids, and Danielle starts, did a wonderful job, and so Ursula transformed in front of the kids, and so did the eels, and it was great, she talked about character, and it was, it was perfect, and it was really good, because it, I can see how it could be scary for those kids, and the lights are off, and, you know, but it was great, it was a lot of fun.
Great.
And so the eighth grade, the eighth graders who talked to the younger students about.
With, yeah, with Danielle there, but they were.
How nice.
So they introduced themselves as, you know, I like, I have a dog, I like to read. So they introduced themselves as kids and then they came into their character.
That's very cool.
It was really, it was wonderfully done. And for kids who were, probably would have been afraid, they, they, there was none, they were, they were enjoying the whole show, so it was good.
Okay. All right, uh, next meeting, next meeting dates, our board's next meeting is May fourteenth, regular meeting. We have a retreat on May thirtieth. Um, the SU retreat is in the morning or the afternoon? Mr. Mason, do you know?
Yes.
Thank you. And the Heinsberg Board Retreat will be the other. Um, those who are not on the SU board are more than welcome to come to the SU retreat if they're so inclined.
Locals go first and, uh, does that sound right?
Yeah, that does. I think that's correct.
The afternoon, we urge everybody to take a round.
I think that's correct, yes. Um, and then we have a business meeting on June twenty-fifth, which, um, I'm not sure what the topics will cover, but should be on your calendar.
Sorry.
We need a quorum at least, all the year-end stuff to keep you on the up and up.
That's usually the one of the fun meetings.
Um, we have an executive session to, to possibly talk about negotiations on the agenda, but I don't know that it's necessary unless any of you feel it is.
My seven years in children, I know. Yeah, I'm good with what you just updated me on.
All right, so I would, you got anything?
I didn't, I wasn't paying attention.
No, we're arguing.
We're good.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. At eight thirty-five. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.